The City of Rockaway Beach Planning Commission meeting on Thursday, November 20th, 2025 at 5:00 PM will now come to order. Please stand and join me with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's record who is in attendance. Commissioner Cole.
Here.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanyon.
Yes.
Commissioner Maxfield.
Here remotely.
Commissioner Winchester.
Here.
Running Commission Liaison McGinnis.
Here.
Mayor McNeely.
Here.
I, President Bill Hassel, am present. Next on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes from September 18th, 2025. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? If not, I'll retain a motion to approve the September 18th, 2025 meeting minutes as presented.
I move to approve the September 18th, 2025 meeting minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the September 18th, 2025 meeting minutes as presented. Is there any discussion? Let's record how the commissioners vote. Commissioner Cole.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanyon.
Yes.
Commissioner Maxfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester.
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion carries unanimously. There are no presentations or guests this, oh, okay. No presentations, that's it. Scheduled. So does the city planner have anything to report?
Yes, I do. I have prepared a slide for my staff report because there's quite a bit of items that I wanted to get through and thought it'd be the most entertaining way to do it. So I do have some updates with the Luba case that came before the, or, well, the, regarding the Nidana Wave planning development, which came before the planning commission and then went to the city council. So an update on this appeal is that in October, the applicant Nidana Wave informed all parties of their intent to appeal the latest decision by the city council. So, wrong button. So what does that mean? We're still trying to decipher exactly what the next steps are. Part of that, we shared the local record. We learned that Oregon shores who initiated the appeal to the city council moved to intervene. And then we're more or less waiting for the petition review is where the applicant makes all their legal arguments as to what exactly they're appealing. So at this moment, we're not exactly sure what the details are with that. And that is expected to happen later this month for us to hear that and we'll continue talking with the legal council as to what our next steps are going to be. Next item I want to talk about is the FEMA pick 'em. That was, if you recall, it's zoning ordinance amendments to meet the a biop or biological opinion that was prepared saying that the flood insurance program was constituting a taking of endangered species. FEMA responded by giving cities options to pick to be in compliance. On last, or yes, last week, city council moved to stay that hearing that was to adopt the zoning ordinance amendments related to a flood hazard overlay zone. The city council did not set a date, so currently we're going to wait. And if the city council wants to retake the issue, then we'll renotice interested parties as well as it will come back to the planning commission for a new review. Related to that, city council directed the planning commission to review the flood hazard overlay zone and incorporate FEMA's 2020 model code standards and separate those standards that were related to the pick 'em with those related to FEMA's model code. This would provide quite a bit of clarity when it comes to the flood hazard overlay zone. So our standards, so what does this mean that the the pick 'em has been stayed, the hearing for that has been stayed? We're going to continue our review of permits within the overlay flood hazard overlay zone as we usually would. We're kind of waiting for FEMA to finalize their environmental impact statement. This would happen somewhere in 2027. That will provide a direction as to next steps and provide a legal basis for us to take action. So currently, we're not in compliance with the pick 'em. The city of Rockaway is not in compliance with the pick 'em. However, we were also notified that the National Flood Insurance Program lapsed in September. We're, you know, nationwide unrelated to the pick 'em issue, so it kind of left pick 'em being a meat point. The other big item that I want to share with you all is the project to update our zoning ordinance. Part of the strategic plan is to look at our zoning code as well as our comprehensive plan. Early on into being into the position city planner, I applied for a grant with the Department of Land Conservation Development. We received that grant. A consultant team was assigned to us, which will be Cascadia Partners. So we'll be repartaining with Cascadia Partners for this project. And this, it is specific to housing amendments where, you know, the majority of our zones are housing or residential zones, so we'll be looking at it holistically. I met with the folks at DLCD to kind of plan our next steps around this project. Where this week and next week, we're going to be doing some scoping with Cascadia Partners. The planning commission is the advisory committee, so we'll be having regular updates as to how this project is advancing and have your intake into the direction of it. Yeah. So there's a lot of exciting stuff with that project. Kind of tangentially to that last meeting, two meetings ago, we talked about the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis. So we are, you know, having a regional approach to that with the county. The county also received a grant from the Department of Land Conservation Development to do that work. From what I haven't heard, any updates as to what consultant will be working with the county and us on that project. So I'll keep you all informed as that progresses as well. In terms of other grants, I have also applied to a grant to look at our comprehensive plan map. It's a map that was adopted in 1992. It has a lot of issues we have discussed in the past, like distortion. It hasn't been updated. So we're applied to a grant to go through a process of updating the comprehensive zoning map. This would complement our other zoning ordinance update project. It's a needed update regardless, so I'll keep you also posted on that one. On November 4th, I attended a coastal resilience workshop that was hosted by the DLCD. It occurred in Pacific City. This was attended by planners from the Oregon coast, including from Tillamook County, Lincoln County, and Foose County. It was a sort of a peer learning event where we shared different strategies, but also different resources to increase the resiliency of coastal communities from, you know, a land use perspective. There was a lot of interesting projects from bridge building, and I mean literally building bridges across Tillamook County for both the passes of opening ways for salmon as well as, you know, updating much needed infrastructure. So we'll, you know, be keeping those tools in mind in our overall planning of Rockaway. And then my last update is regarding permits for both of, mainly for the month of October. We had seven zoning permits, one of which was for a dwelling unit. So in the background of all these other projects, we're still chugging along as a functioning city when it comes to building and issuing the short term side of planning. That's my update. Any questions or anything I can clarify?
I just had a question about the grants that the city has been awarded in connection with the comprehensive plan. Will those grants cover the entire cost of redo, of doing a new comprehensive plan or?
Yeah, so it's a, definitely it's an interesting approach. So we're going to, we're going to start with the zoning ordinance. And we're going to look at, you know, any particular aspect of the zoning ordinance that is not in compliant with state law related, specifically related to housing. And then, you know, based on that, we'll see if our comprehensive plan meets, you know, needed changes. So it's narrow in that regard. However, I have been talking with them that we want to really take on our comprehensive plan. It's not going to be in the scope of their funding, but on the side, as we're working with them, we'll be reorganizing. You've seen exactly what is in there. Part of my project this week was kind of moving all of that into a Word document and figuring out what the structure was of the comprehensive plan. And it's a lot, it's messy. It's really messy. It is not clear and that's one of, at least, at the very least, if we're not relooking at policy, just looking at reorganizing. So we can understand exactly what's in there.
Great. Congratulations on the grants.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, great. Public here, there's no public hearing scheduled tonight, so we'll move on to public input from non agenda items. I have no one signed up. Is there anyone online that would like to contribute?
I could comment on any items succeeding. You can raise your hand. No hands are raised.
We'll move on to old business. We have no old business, so we'll move on to new business. And we have a sign up sheet. There's no one signed up. And. First order. Hey. We want to see if anybody online will provide comment.
No one raised their hand.
Okay.
Page four, item A.
Yep. So there's no further comments. The chair recognizes city planner Tapia to introduce the first order of business, a discussion regarding zoning ordinance amendment of multi-unit definition.
Thank you. So this is, I'm going to talk about a couple, two items. And this is in advance of our December meeting. We have three hearings currently scheduled for our December meeting. So in order to make that meeting lighter, I want to present some information now. Obviously, for the sake of the public, I'll bring this up again, but I wanted to kind of have some of this information circulating in there before that hearing. So the first, oh, thanks, I forgot. The first amendment that we're looking at is a zoning ordinance amendment related to the the definition of multi-unit housing. So why bring up this zoning ordinance amendment? Part of the strategic plan, city council directed staff to complete an update of the zoning code and increase the diversity of housing options. This is a bit of a pretaste of what the larger project is going to look like. But our current language for the definition of multi-unit housing is a residential structure containing five or more dwelling units sharing a common wall or floors and ceiling built in a single lot or parcel. So why change this definition? So currently, this narrows the type of residential buildings allowed to be built. It requires a very particular building type to meet the multi-unit definition. And this limits the possibility for one creative configuration, but also a placement of units on a site. We have a sitting criteria that the planning commission reviews. And, you know, part of that criteria is looking at how does the project accommodate streams or natural features? You know, currently, our definition creates a very narrow avenue for respecting and natural features on a site. So our current language, and here's some examples of building types that would be allowed through in our current definition. But all units are in a single building. So in order, let's say a project would have a random, let's say, 20 units. All 20 units would need to be contained in a single structure. Not saying that there's anything wrong with this or this building type, but it just limits possibilities. So the proposed language that will be part of the hearing in our December meeting is one or more residential structures containing five or more dwelling units in any configuration built in a single lot or parcel, not including middle housing. That's another aspect of our current language is that middle housing, we made some changes for middle housing, but multi-unit middle housing, that distinction wasn't, isn't super clear right now in our code. So the proposed language would allow for having multiple structures on a lot similar to middle housing types, it would allow for multiple middle housing types on a single lot. Included some different pictures of different configurations of what that could look like. Top one is one of my favorite projects, but so I just included that one for fun. But I wanted to open the floor to any discussion or thoughts that you may have for this zoning ordinance amendment.
What do you like about the top?
It's a wide variety of different building structures. All the buildings that are part of a single project, it was built in the 1920s.
Oh, interesting.
So it's an old project, but it just the incorporation of green space in a, you know, a massive housing project wouldn't be allowed within our current code. Or, you know, that it would limit the amount of units that we would allow within a particular project. Those are like our two options.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, please.
You probably should know the answer to this, but I don't, so I'm going to ask it. Why do we have a distinction with middle housing and the multi-unit?
Yeah, so our middle housing types are for a single lot. So for example, a triflex, we allow three units on one lot. But if someone, let's say, came around and had an idea, they want to have two triflexes on a lot, we currently wouldn't allow that. So it would neither meet our multi-unit definition nor middle housing definition.
Okay, thank you.
And in terms of where the, you know, new language came from, looking at model codes from both the Department of Land Conservation Development, but also other cities, it was kind of unique that we had this requirement that they would need to be in a single building.
Right.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'm just, you know, like processing it and trying to understand how that, what your, I like your signs, your slides that say, and what does this mean? Why is this, you know, why is this important? So I'm trying to create that slide in my own head for this. And as you were saying, so if somebody wanted to do a multi-unit development, the, our current zone would mean that they wouldn't do it in regular R1 or whatever, the residential area, it would have to be in a, is that correct?
Yeah, it's interesting, and that's one of the things we'll visit at the larger project. But it's a conditional use for both the R1 and R2 zone. It's allowed outright in our R3 zone. But regardless of whether or not it's conditional or outright, they both have the sitting criteria that the planning commission would review. So, and I don't have the exact criteria in front of me, but it's like five different points that we would check to see whether or not the project met. But this change would just, you know, permit two different structures or two, three, or how many different?
More than one.
More than one.
In a single development.
Yeah, a single lot or parcel, yeah.
And the parcel wouldn't necessarily be your residential parcel. It could be a larger parcel, as you were saying. So the size of the parcel doesn't matter on this, in this particular case. It's just allowing more flexibility on what kind of building you can build if you wanted to build multi-housing. Meaning more than five, five or more.
We're not, in this change, we would not touch the requirement for lot size for a multi-unit project. This is just, they would still need to meet any other criteria for multi-unit housing.
Okay.
Is there anything special if someone has two lots and they want to build two right side by side? Or are they treated each individually?
We would treat each individually, yeah. You know, that's one of the interesting things about our code right now is that, you know, someone could go through a lot division and build multiple projects on different lots. But it just adds more steps to the process.
More steps.
Yeah.
So they could get around it by doing a lot division. But this would allow them to just do it faster and less.
Yeah, it would still be in one ownership.
Okay.
Good. Any other discussion?
Commissioner McGinnis, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm like Commissioner Hess, I'm forming my how and why in my head here. Going back to what Commissioner Johnson said about middle housing. So middle house, so this, if I understand this correctly, this could be for large apartment complexes, but middle housing is below that. Middle housing is between single residential structures and multi-complexes, right?
Yeah. Yeah, and this distinguishes the middle housing.
From that, okay, thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? In Rockaway, do we have any of this?
Of the new language or?
No, do we have a multi-unit development? That we could say, that's like the condos down on the blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, well, we definitely do. I did not include a picture of, maybe should have. It's very similar to the top right picture, but we do have a.
Condo buildings and, yeah, those that have individual units or rented units, that is a multi-unit and building, dwelling. It doesn't have, it can be. But then there's also hotels, which is, that falls in a different category because that's.
Correct.
Okay. But a condo is a multi-unit.
It would not. From my understanding, condo has a different process, but maybe I'm mistaken here.
Okay. So this would be multi-unit dwelling that people rent? It would be.
It would be a single ownership.
Single ownership, gotcha. Condos are multi-ownerships.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Are height restrictions going to be involved as well or?
Not in this change. I think, believe, right now it's a three-floor maximum for multi-units. None of that is changing in this proposed amendment.
I know the multi-unit, we did specify things like that.
Yeah, this is not touching any of that.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, with the next order of business is discussion regarding comprehensive plan amendment of policies related to the economy. Chair recognizes city planner Tapia to introduce the proposed amendments.
So the next amendment or technically a set of amendments is of our comprehensive plan. And these are policies related to the economy. So, and why initiate this now? On November 12th last week, city council directed staff to prepare amendments to the comprehensive plan to promote purpose business practices. The current language of our comprehensive plan is the city will support efforts of the Chamber of Commerce and local business persons to expand visitor attractions and events that are available to tourists. That's one policy. Next policy, the city will cooperate with the Chamber of Commerce, developing a marketing program that effectively promotes the city attractions and facilities. Such a program should be fully coordinated with other communities in the area. So during the city council workshop, some of the reasons for this change were brought up. But more or less, the gist of it is that the language specifies working with a particular nonprofit entity over others. There are several options that the city council could partner with. And, you know, keeping all those options open is ultimately beneficial for all. Our language of our comprehensive plan specifies a single entity. So the current policy restricts considerations of different options and marketing programs. So this changes to, you know, reflect that that is not a fair business practice. So the proposed language change would be the city supports the efforts to expand visitor attractions and events that are available to tourists. And the next policy, the city will develop a marketing program that effectively promotes city attractions and facilities. So basically, this amendment is just to open up the range of possibilities. And with that, I'll prosper discussion.
I'll just add, so this came up as I was going over the first quarter strategic plan update. And we were talking about the reorganization of Tillamook Coast Visitors Association. You know, there's a pretty good chance the city isn't be going out to look at other destination management or marketing companies. So we just need to be prepared to be able to put on an RFP, not be directed by our comp plan to focus on a single organization.
As a city councillor who was part of that discussion, I might add that we have contracted with Tillamook Coast Visitors Association since 2014, I believe, somewhere.
About 2016, I think.
2016. And and as a city planner mentioned, we want to, as things are changing with Tillamook Coast Visitors Association, we want to have options to look at lots of marketing plans and marketing businesses and not be tied down.
I'm just confused as to why this is a planning commission question.
Yeah, part of that is because all land use are related to our comprehensive plan decisions start at the planning commission. And then if needed, they raise to the city council, but, you know, currently is part of our comprehensive plan policies.
I can help answer that too. It's one of the 19 land use goals that the state mandates that we address. And they don't address who will, they don't say we have to address who will do the marketing. They say we have to address an economy plan for our economy. And so this was put in and you seem to be much more updated on the dates than I am.
2009, I think.
2009, this was put in the comprehensive plan and for some reason. And then as our city planner just said, state law also says that any changes to the comprehensive plan have to start with the planning commission.
Thank you.
So, but it's, it's there because we were, had to, back in 2009, they had to address how we were going to move our economy.
And again, I don't, I don't know the history. I wasn't here at that point in time. But what planner Tapia and city manager Shepherd said is true. No organization, whether it's a public entity or a private entity, locks themselves down to who they work with in a document like this. They want the flexibility when it's time to go out for bid and doesn't preclude the chamber if they would choose to compete with an RFP, they certainly can. If they would choose to compete, uh, with an RFP, they certainly can. But we want it, we want to give our city leadership, um, maximum opportunity to deliver the best possible value for our lodging tax dollars. So, uh, cleaning this up at this time, uh, just makes a lot of sense to City Council and, and, and myself as, as mayor.
Excuse me, President Hassel. Commissioner Maxfield, call this raised.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. No, I just want to, uh, just chime in with a bit, one other observation. I think this is a, a good suggestion. I, I appreciate this, uh, this, uh, language update. Um, I, there's also some similarly restrictive language in the Comprehensive Plan, um, with respect to the, uh, like economic development of the city of Rockaway and, and, um, like a, uh, focus specifically, exclusively on tourism-related activities. And I think it would, um, I, I've made this point before, but I would like to advocate for, for more broader economic development. Obviously tourism will remain important for our city, uh, and should be fostered and, and encouraged. But I would also like to see a focus on more, uh, other aspects of year-round economic development, um, that's already happening with the rise of remote work, but, um, looking at ways to create a more holistic economy, more diversified economy. And I think that the language that's in the Comprehensive Plan currently, um, is a impediment to those efforts because it specifically specifies that Rockaway's economy is and should be focused on tourism exclusively. So I'd like to see, um, that language looked at as well down the road.
City manager, is that something that has to be asked? Does the City Council, I, I, I personally agree with the Commissioner Maxfield.
Yeah.
And I, honestly, off and on, I've thought about that language boxing us in also. Is that something that needs to come as a directive from City Council to look at that?
Let us, let us take a look at it. If we can, if we can bundle it.
Okay.
And it meets the director from the, the council, that's fine. There's also some noticing that we've, we've already done, um, uh, for this. So it could be on the December, uh, Planning Commission agenda, hold a public hearing. Um, so if, if, if it can fit it in, it looks, looks like something we can do, we will.
But if not, we could come back at the next month with that?
I don't know, but it'd be that soon, but yeah.
Okay.
Come back.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is, it's definitely an action, but Planning Commission can also start, uh, on, on, on your own as well.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay. All right, we're moving on to the, uh, extension for Lake Lidle. Um, the mayor and, uh, Mr. McGinnis excuse themselves. And, uh, since they will be looking at this and.
Yes, we will.
So you're gonna come back? The next order of business is consideration to approve request for one-year extension for Lake Lidle Estates Phases Four through Seven, preliminary subdivision case file 23 dash 01. So under Oregon government ethics laws, public officials must declare any potential or actual conflicts of interest. Any members of the Planning Commission wish to declare a conflict of interest, you may do so now and state whether you believe you can participate and make a fair and impartial decision on this matter. Anyone to, uh, declare? Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I know that there's language somewhere, but I do have a potential conflict of interest in that, um, a family member of mine owns, uh, property in Lake Lidle that is adjacent to this proposed project. But I don't believe that causes a conflict. I just wanted to declare it. I can be impartial.
And I'll declare the same concern. Uh, I live next to the property itself and, uh, but I don't believe I'm having a conflict of interest in that property. I'll now invite City Planner Tapia to present the staff report on this request for an extension.
Thank you. Uh, so the applicant is requesting for another one-year extension to meet the conditions of approval. Uh, they, uh, you know, this, this, uh, application was initially approved in, in 2023. Um, it was, uh, given an, an extension, uh, already in 2024. Uh, but the applicant is seeking another, a year, uh, which, which they, uh, can do for, from our perspective of our code. Um, they are actively working with Public Works, uh, to, to solve, uh, some, uh, issues that came up when it came to providing utilities to these lots. Uh, so it, it is not, uh, that it's a project that is sitting idle right now. They, they are currently, uh, working to meet, um, uh, the, the conditions of, of their approval. Um, in, in terms of, of what we're looking at today or the specific criteria is, um, uh, in granting extension, the, in granting an extension, the Planning Commission shall make a written finding, uh, that the effects upon which the approval was based have not changed to an extent sufficient to warrant re-filing of the tentative plan. Uh, so in essence, what we're looking at is have the, the facts changed? Um, I know that there have been several zoning ordinance, uh, and sub, uh, zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance updates since, uh, the initial approval of October, uh, 2023. Uh, reviewing these changes, they are middle housing-related changes. And this project, uh, it does not relate to middle housing. They're proposing a single unit, uh, development. So none of the changes, you know, restrict or, or would add any, uh, additional requirements uh, to the, the, this application or this fine unit development. Uh, so therefore none of the facts upon which the approval was based have changed. Um, so with that, uh, we have a, a, a suggested motion for, for the Planning Commission. Um, but it over.
Okay. Any questions?
We're gonna discuss it.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, now, I thought we made a motion discuss. All right. All right. I went through all of our subdivision pages. And, um, when I found what I was looking for or what prompted a question in my mind, I, I pulled three pages out of that huge notebook that we have. And guys, everywhere I looked, it's, it says one extension. And I know that we don't say that we limit or we can keep giving extensions in perpetuity, but we're not clear. And I know we all recall that that became a horrendous issue for us. Um, and I don't know. I, I, when I see one extension, I think one extension, not two. Um, and in a small way, did we need to? Because it's asking for an extension? We, did we send out to property owners public notice that it was on the agenda tonight? I'm just, I'm, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with another extension. And I don't see where it's saying, okay, we can do that.
If there were changes, um, if the changes that you had found to the ordinance had impacted, um, the previous approval for the subdivision, at what, one point, would we be able to add additional criteria if that happened to occur?
Yeah, so the, uh, let's say that the, the changes did, you know, uh, uh, affect the, the approval in a certain way. The next step would determine that though, that, that, you know, those changes would, uh, prevent that application had, that the approval of the change, changes something that would have made that approval, uh, no longer, you wouldn't have approved it had it come to you.
Or we made added criteria as the, if necessary. Um, because one of the things, they still have to bring back all of the, because there were quite a few, like all of the, yeah, like a lot.
Three folks.
Yeah, they, they still have to respond to us and bring that back.
Yes, so we'll, we'll still, this is still preliminary. We're still, then the preliminary stages, the next step would be the final, uh, and we'll see that they have met that criteria, uh, and that their, you know, final proposition is consistent with the preliminary.
Yeah, and I do recall that they had substantial, um, answers that they would need to provide related to utilities. And I would imagine that with engineering is taking a substantial amount of time, having only participated in tiny projects compared to the scale of what they're doing. So I would imagine some going back and forth with engineering is months for a single question.
I think that, um, knowing the length of times that it helped, that it, that you need in order for utilities and engineering, that, to me, uh, it feels like giving them a little bit more time makes sense because of all the hoops that they have to go through, even, oh, I, I wasn't here on the first go-round, but I under, you know, I kind of watched what was happening from afar. But, um, so I'm just saying generally, giving them a little bit more time because they're, uh, they're actively trying to solve these questions. So it's not like they're sitting. And that's good. Just.
Do you know if they, they need the extension in order to mitigate all the soil issues there, there?
Uh, they, they didn't specify, uh, uh, the exact reason for, for the extension. I, I just know that they, uh, providing sewer has been the open question right now. And so they're working with our Public Works to solve that.
One of the concerns is that property, you know, they were, they cleared it and had big piles of, uh, wood. And, uh, all of a sudden the piles disappeared overnight and discovered that they didn't haul it away. They just spread it on the ground. So the property is very soft. And clearly they have to dig up an awful lot of dirt, haul it away, bring in new dirt and compact it to make it suitable for utilities, roads and so on, which may explain the additional. So that's a pretty big project.
When was the original Lake Lidle project begun? How old is it?
Fantastic question. I know for this phase, uh, they, you know, it, it, 2010, I think is when they initiated this, this phase, uh, that, you know, that, from my understanding, it's a, we can extend one year at a time for a 10-year period. And then it, it, uh, needs to come back, uh, either way to, to, you know, reopen the, the, uh, the case. Um, and so, you know, this latest phase would be from 2023. In terms of when was phase one, I don't have that answer to you right now.
Any other discussion?
I do. I have a little bit of concern. My, my understanding was, as our, um, City Planner had mentioned, that we, they could come back for, um, you know, each year for 10 years under either state, state statute or our city code, um, to be able to get an extension on a subdivision. So I'm a little bit concerned about what, um, Planning Commissioner Lanyon was looking at. Um, is it in the subdivision section?
Hmm.
Not the plan. And I didn't see any year anywhere annually for 10 years. I did not see that anywhere.
Okay.
My, my, oh, I will just.
Could I ask where, um, you were looking, just so I can reference it?
Um, it's online. I went to Planning Department and it, uh, has the, thank goodness, um, accessible pages that you can pull up section by section. And this one is, uh, what, I, I just took individual page. It's subdivisions, ordinances regarding subdivisions. This is what this is, right? A subdivision. Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, my concern, along the same as with you, is if they ask for one extension, who says they're gonna ask for another one? And then when and if this project finally happens, these homes are going to be so expensive. You know, it's, who's gonna buy them? I mean, it's going to become vacation homes again and go into the STR pool or just sit empty most of the time because the family bought it. But they're, they're gonna end up being a lot more expensive than the homes that are in Lake Lidle now.
You know this doesn't count, but philosophically, we just went through multi-unit filings. We're trying to increase the concept of what we can do and make better use of land in the city of Rockaway Beach. And, but I know that we can't impose things like that. We can just say, hey, this is a cool policy. Maybe you want to think about doing that instead of all these single expensive homes on big lots. But.
Okay.
In discussion? In terms of like, uh, next steps from here, we, we do need to be explicit about the criteria. But in, if we want to add policy in the future, uh, to, you know, set a limit of, of how many times an applicant can come back, you know, we would then consult with, make sure that we're being consistent with Oregon law, uh, and, at that point. From, from my understanding, and I, I'll find exactly where, but it is, uh, from my understanding, a 10-year, um, a window that they would have before they need to restart the process.
They restarted it in 23. So they had the 10-year and they came to the end. And then we.
Uh, uh, every, every year they need to, to, uh, express that they want to, uh.
For another 10.
Be extended just for one year. And, and, uh, at some point, they, they are no longer allowed to, to do those extensions. But it basically is because at any point our code could change and add provisions. And this is our opportunity to, uh, make sure that someone is not, uh, you know, extending a project for the sake of extending a project.
This is the 2023 Phase Two part, not the Phase One.
Not the, the other one.
Yeah.
So. So we don't, um, there's nothing that we can do to change the, to say no to the extension because it's the law that they get to extend it. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, my understanding.
Would have to have a reason.
Yeah.
Tell them now.
So, okay.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Um, I'm, I'm still concerned about, um, the language that Commissioner Lanyon had read. But based on our City Planner's recollection of the 10-year allowance, and that was my recollection from prior hearings, that hearing.
Right. Um, but there is that 10-year window.
And that was the reason that we requested that they redo the entire application again. And start over. And then we gave them a list of changes since that 10-year period.
Okay.
Hmm.
And then they can't, they haven't come back with the changes yet.
No, no, I think.
They have to.
No response.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can't go forward with anything until the changes have been addressed.
Gotcha. All right.
So, uh, there's a suggested Commissioner motion then?
I move, based on the facts and evaluations presented by City Staff, that the Planning Commission approve a one-year extension of time until November 13th, 2026, for Lake Lidle Estates Phases, um, Four through Eight, preliminary subdivision case file number 23 dash 01, to allow the applicant to file a final subdivision plat with the city of Rockaway Beach and direct staff to prepare findings and conclusions and authorize the chair to sign an order to that effect.
Is there a second?
Second it.
Then moved in seconded, is there any further discussion? If not, uh, let's record our Commissioners' vote. Commissioner Cole?
No.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanyon?
No.
Commissioner Maxfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion carries. I'll let the, uh, Mayor and, uh.
Oh, thank you.
Some member.
Bines are.
Please come back now. Their timeout is finished. Next order of business is a review of our 2026 meeting dates. City Planner Tapia will share the dates for review.
I don't, I don't. No.
Yes, the meeting dates are in the packet. I did not ask, I didn't ask them through the slide. We, or rather, our city reporters, check, make sure there's not a conflict with holidays. But we wanted to present and for you to let us know if there's a conflict to that. Need a plan.
Any conflicts, any discussion?
I checked my calendar just to make sure that I had them all correct on my calendar. And it appears that they're all the third Thursday of the month. That none of them fall on holidays or anything like that. So you just put your little.
Automatic.
Automatic calendar in there, it works. I know I will be out of town on two of the dates, but it's possible that I might be able to zoom in on one of them, but not on the other.
Which two are those?
February 19th, I will not be able to attend. And April 16th, I will probably be able to zoom in.
Okay. All right, so. Any motion to change? There we go. Okay, we'll go ahead with that. So, planning commission's comments and concerns. Here recognizes Commissioner Johnson.
I just have a little concern since we don't have in writing, you know, the 10-year window. So I assume that our city planner will be looking to find where that is in either the code or ordinance. If you locate that, could you share that with the commission, please? Then we don't have to do it.
Of course. You know where it is?
Okay. Commissioner Lanyon?
I'm good, thanks.
Commissioner Winchester?
I just wanted to mention, because I know we have a lot on our December meeting, but I'm only going to be able to attend about the first hour of that meeting, probably, just so you all know. And I, I just don't want to create a quorum problem if I have to hop off at about 6:15.
Okay. Commissioner Hess?
I also have a conflict on that December meeting. What is the actual date of it again?
Not on our next year list.
I don't know that I'll be able to be here.
Pull it up real quick.
It is December 18th.
18th, yes.
Well, I might be able to zoom in, so. I'll try. Be at different times. And then I also wanted to say thank you to the city planner for all those grants.
Yeah, awesome.
And one other little just nugget of something we didn't discuss at all today, but there's STR licensing discussion that I think that the city council will be working on soon. And I want us to consider the extending, that the current situation is that we extend the license to when a STR is sold to the next buyer. And I want us to consider changing that ordinance, so. Just bringing it up.
Okay. And Commissioner Maxfield?
Thank you. I will just add on to what Commissioner Hess just said. I think that that's a serious flaw in our current STR policy. It creates two classes of housing and provides, you know, extra value to investment properties at the expense of local residents. And I think it's a really unfortunate part of the rule that should be revisited as soon as possible, in my opinion. So thanks for jogging my memory about that, Lydia, because I hadn't thought about that in a minute. And then the other thing I just wanted to mention is that next Friday night is the tree lighting at the wayside. So it should be a good event, and I hope everyone can make it. And just thank you so much to all the volunteers and city employees who make that happen. Looking forward to it. Thank you all.
Hey, hey. Commissioner Cole?
Everybody beat me to what I was gonna say about what Lydia said about the STRs and Jason just said about next Friday. So when I first moved here and I went to the tree lighting, I was like, I live in a freaking Hallmark movie. That's what made me want to move out here full-time. Looking forward to it.
Okay, planning commissioner, Lydia Zon McInnes?
Yeah, so the first thing is, when I said I agreed with Jason Maxfield about erasing more or amending more restrictive language in our comprehensive plan, I realize that that did not go through the city council, that was just me talking. So we need to put that thought on hold and just deal with what we have on the table until city council gets a chance to workshop it. And the other thing about the STR license, and I don't know how to get this information other than to send it to the city manager, and you all could request it for him. But I have been putting together a document of every house that's been sold in the last year in Rockaway city limits, including incorporated in Donna down to Stark Street. And I'm only past the first three months because I had to take a break, but I only worked on it for a few hours. And then the mayor looked at it to see if they had an STR license or not. And surprisingly, 15 houses have sold that do not have a license in Rockaway in the last three months. And they have sold around all neighborhoods in the city. And only eight have sold that do have a license. And they have also sold in all neighborhoods in the city. So I will finish that in the next couple of days. And I'll just send it to the city manager. And if anybody wants to look at it, you can get it from him. But it's not what I expected to find. And I have real estate agents who say to me in town, well, I can't sell any houses since there's been a cap. Well, that's definitely not true because there were 30-some properties, if you include vacant land, that's been sold in just the last three months in the city limits of Rockaway. But I also didn't expect to find twice as many houses being sold without an STR license. There's a lot of other things that go into play, I understand with this. But this is just sort of a foundational look at it. I'm including in my document, I'm including the real estate price they sold for and how many days they were on the market.
Three weeks. Okay, and mayor?
So a couple of things. First, this commission, many, 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 many months ago, did some incredibly good work. All your work is good, but specifically, this meant a lot to me on our community grant program. May all remember that, you really took it up multiple notches. And we have a really professional, well-run selection process, et cetera, et cetera. Just prior to Planner Tapia joining the city, the previous planner held a session here to look at the facade grant. And I hope that we can bring that back to the commission and have the commission do the same incredible work that you did with the with the community grant on the facade grant. So just put that out there. And then, yes, the tree lighting is awesome. In 2022, I was introduced to Penny Cole, and she introduced herself as Penny the Corky One. That will always stick with me, and she is absolutely a delightful human being, and I'm really glad that I know her. But also, some of you may remember, the city held a Holiday Bazaar at City Hall on the Friday, Saturday, Sunday after Thanksgiving. That stopped while the fire department is bringing that back. So the 28th, the 29th, and the 30th, here at City Hall, the fire department is sponsoring the Holiday Bazaar. And they've actually, we now have an annex because there'll be tables set up at the International Police Museum. They offered space there, and there was additional vendors interested in participating in it. So it was something I heard from residents, why can't we have the Holiday Bazaar? Well, we're gonna have the Holiday Bazaar, so I'm very excited about that. And then on December 13th, at 6:00 PM, Santa will arrive at Fire Station. And that's one of my favorite things to go to in addition to the tree lighting. So put that on your calendar. Coco hot cocoa and cookies and Santa and kids having a great time, and they have some giveaways and stuff. So I think that's great. With that, I'll turn it back to the chair.
Thank you. Hey, I was talking with the fire chief, and we thought it would be really nice to have an actual demonstration of the new fire engine at Lake Lidl. And the reason is that it's tested there, I think yearly, to make sure that it can pump the amount of water it's supposed to, and everything works like it's supposed to. It's that certification. It'd be really nice when the restroom is completed at Lake Lidl that we have a grand opening and have the big fire truck there to demonstrate all that. So I think that's going to be a very exciting thing. He's all for it. So I just want to put that out there as an idea that would be, everybody would love to come out and see how far that ladder can shoot water. Just let everybody know, I'm going to be out, the December meeting, I'm going to actually be on an airplane flying over to Hawaii.
Somebody's got to do it.
Somebody's got to do it, yeah, yeah. My daughter has gifted our entire family, 23 people, with a free trip to a cruise in Hawaii.
Oh, awesome.
Wow.
I'm more proud of the work that she has done with her husband to develop a plumbing business that is massively successful. So I'm excited about that. My bus driver, school bus driver across the street from me noticed the truck still has a new decoration on our street. I don't know, you know, that's got a yellow paint on it now. Are there any concerns with that in the future or now?
It raises an eyebrow, but it'd be something public works would review.
I didn't know whether they had any regulations.
You know, the yellow brick road? I think the businesses own those sidewalks.
Well, but the actual city property sidewalk as opposed to in his area.
I think the brick sidewalks are owned by the business.
The business that it's in front of.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not city property.
Okay. Okay.
Don't you have to have a permit then to alter the easement?
That would be public works, and I'd check in with Dan and.
Get a permit. Just like we have, if we alter the area outside of our home.
I have one other concern. Back in April, we discussed, actually for three months, three separate meetings, we discussed how we could open up ADA compliant STRs and make those available without impacting the current setup. And I'm very concerned that that still hasn't received any recognition at all. And I just want to see what we can do to move that along. Because we have a site that can be turned into an STR and be a model for other cities, but we've got no plans to do that. So just want to put that out as something that needs some attention. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Before we do, will we have a quorum in December? Oh, that's a good question, yeah.
Be three.
How many do you need?
Well, it's potentially three out.
Yeah.
Four? Ah.
Who's not gonna be here? You?
I will be remote, and I will have to log off no later than 6:15. So if we're in the middle of a hearing, I still have to log.
And I'm questionable, I don't, I'm maybe in Costa Rica, which is not Hawaii.
But not bad. Not bad.
Good.
Doesn't suck. Can't compete with that. My location. But I don't know, you know, I don't know my situation. I don't know what I'm going to be doing at that particular moment. So.
Yeah, it'll be close, but on paper, we've got a quorum.
Okay, cool.
If Winchester is able to stay long enough, we'll have more than a quorum.
Okay.
Okay.
So if we need to consider maybe moving something up in some way to accommodate, I don't know. Because you said we have a full schedule in December.
It's already been noticed.
Okay.
I just, it's late, and it's just late in the year this time, but it just, that's how the calendar.
You can order the adjournment of the meeting accordingly.
Okay, so motion to adjourn?
I will move to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
I'll second it.
It's moved and seconded to adjourn. Let's vote how the commissioners want to do this. Commissioner Cole?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanyon?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion carries. Meeting is adjourned at 6:05.
Hey. Thank you very much. Remembered where that was. Well, yeah, but it's.